Good evening. This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment being held on Wednesday, February 26, 2020, at 7:30 in the municipal complex pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act. Adequate notice of the time and place of this regular meeting has been provided by prominently displaying the schedule of regular meetings on the official notice board in the municipal complex and by transmitting a copy of this schedule to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, Trenton Times, The Trentonian, and to Comcast Cable of New Jersey Inc. A copy was also filed with the Clerk of Princeton.
Mr. Cohen?
President.
Ms. Coulson?
Here.
Mr. Davich?
Here.
Mr. Floy?
Here.
Mr. Schreiber?
Here.
Mr. Tendanbaum?
Here.
Mr. Valvani? Ms. Chen?
Here.
Mr. Stein. Thank you.
Okay. I guess we probably should start with the end of the year report. Do we want to just vote on that? How do we do that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, in your packets is the Princeton Zoning Board of Adjustment Resolution regarding our annual report to the council. Has anybody, everybody had a chance to read it over? Questions, comments? And does somebody want to make a recommendation to approve this?
I move to adopt the report and submit it to Mayor Council.
Second? Okay.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floy?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tendanbaum?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. We have several findings of fact, resolutions that will do prior to the new cases. The first one is Z-1919-788, 48 to 50 and 1/2 Pine Street, Block 30.02, Lot 100 in the R4 Zone. A copy of the resolution is in your packets. Any questions, comments? Somebody like to make a motion?
So moved.
Second? I second.
Sure.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floy?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Thank you. It's approved.
Okay. The next one is case number Z-1919-781, 23 Linden Lane, Block 33.03, Lot 95 in the R4 Zone. Once again, there's a copy of this in your packet. Comments, questions? Someone like to make a motion?
I don't know if it matters. There's no seconded by on the...
Second, so we can fill that in.
That was to Mr. Valvani.
Okay. Thank you.
So move.
Second?
Second.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floy?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Case number Z-1919-786, 132 Patent Avenue, Block 53.06, Lot 18 in the R2 Zone. Comments, questions? Motion?
I move approval.
I'll second.
Okay.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floy?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Our last resolution. Case number Z-1919-791, 815 Mount Luthers Road, Block 1001, Lot 4, in the OR-1 Zone. Comments, questions? Somebody like to make a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floy?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. We have three cases tonight.
Yes.
437 Ewing has been put off until March.
It's...
Is it being carried to a date certain, or...
I guess we could say the April hearing.
It's April?
They said they would definitely not be here at the March hearing, so...
Okay.
And what's the... Are they going to renotice, or are we going to announce the date now?
We can announce the date. They gave us an extension to the 30th. What is it, Claudia? The April 24th?
Second.
Second, excuse me. April 22nd. It'll be carried to.
Okay. Okay. Our first case will be case number Z-1919-761, 16 Madison Street, Block 28.02, Lot 39 in the R4 Zone.
Board members, the noticing is in order, and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application.
Okay.
And I will swear in now, Ms. Kim and Mr. Bridger, for the evening. Do you both swear affirm your testimony this evening? Will be truthful.
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Should I just go over the memo?
Yes.
Thanks. Good evening. The applicant is Lori Names, the owner of 16 Madison Street, seeking a variance to permit construction of attic dormers in exception to the required sideyard setbacks. Seeking a C1 and in the alternative a C2, variance to permit this attic, two attic dormers expansion in exception to the required sideyard setbacks. The property is located in the R4 Zone and is subject to the use in bulk regulations in accordance with Section 178254 and 258 of the former Princeton Borough Land Use Ordinance. Existing single-family use is permitted as of right. Property is also in a suggested historic district, and the Historic Preservation Commission did perform a courtesy review, and Elizabeth Kim will update you on their findings. The subject lot is noncompliant with respect to the required 6,000 square foot lot area. The existing is 3,693, and it's also noncompliant with the required 60-foot lot area. The existing is 25 feet, and the house itself is noncompliant with the required eight-foot smaller sideyard setback. The existing is 1.8. It's also noncompliant with the larger 12-foot sideyard setback. The existing is three feet, and combined sideyard setback requirement, it's also noncompliant with that, and that's 20 feet, and the existing is 4.8, and it's noncompliant with the three-to-one height-to-setback ratio. A little history on the applicant. Applied for a variance in 2012 to permit construction of a front yard parking space, which was initially denied, was appealed to the New Jersey Superior Court. Was remanded back to the zoning board in 2013, and the court directed both the applicant and a group of objecting neighbors to be allowed to supplement the existing record with additional testimony and documents to the board to consider the supplemental testimony material and providing additional factual findings and conclusions. The board approved the variance after hearing the testimony from the objectors and the applicant's witnesses and professionals. The current project is an expansion of the attic area, which will be accomplished by adding two dormers. New attic area will be utilized as a master bedroom suite. The recently enacted Neighborhood Character Ordinance exempts dormers from the required height-to-setback ratio, but not from the required sideyard setback. The attic dormers will follow the existing roof overhang, and it's considered an existing, an increase in the existing degree of noncompliance. And just to go through the variances, they're basically existing conditions. The smaller sideyard variance required is eight. The existing is 1.8, as is the proposed, and the larger sideyard requirement is 12. The existing and proposed are three feet, and the required combined sideyard is 20, and the existing and proposed are 4.8 feet. And they've requested C1 and C2 consideration, and unless you have any questions, I will let Elizabeth go over the HPC's findings.
As Mr. Bridger had indicated, the application came before HPC because it is in the historic preservation element of the Princeton Master Plan as the central residential historic district. Therefore, the commission had reviewed it as a courtesy review. HPC conducted their review on this application at their meeting on November 18, 2019. For the applicant to utilize the attic space, they needed to do the expansion by adding the two shed dormers. There were some elements of the dormers which the commission was not completely satisfied with, so there was a discussion during the meeting, and as a result of those discussions, the plan to add the two dormers, which were situated off the roof ridge, was agreed to be adjusted to provide a flat roof in the area instead that would be parallel to the existing roof and which would better integrate with the existing roof line. The applicant also indicated a willingness to further revise the architectural plans to remove the faux-front gable and that the applicant wished, in his place, install a window. HPC voted unanimously to recommend to your board approval of the bulk variance to facilitate the expansion of the attic area. HPC did recognize the expansion of the new bedroom, bathroom, and closet could be accommodated completely in the rear area of the property without necessitating a variance relief. However, HPC was sympathetic to the applicant's position that they would like to preserve the rear yard as much as possible. They felt with these revisions, which the applicant had agreed to, that it would maintain a sensitive approach to allowing these improvements and retain the architectural character and historic streetscape of Madison Street.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm Mark Roselli from Law Firm of Roselli, Grigolo, Giarro, and Lozaro, here on behalf of the applicant, Lori Names. And this evening, we have President Ms. Names, and we have one witness, Mr. Zinder, who will be testifying and who actually appeared, I think, with the applicant in front of the Historical Commission. He has a presentation in which we'll be able to reflect the proposed changes to the subject residence. One notation I want to make for the record is, we actually consider it three dormers, and then as we go through the application, you'll see where it's three versus two. But at this point, I think would swear to the extent that we have questions, Ms. Names and Ms. Zinder, as for witnesses.
Ms. Names, Mr. Zinder, would you both raise your right hand?
Raise your right hand.
Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
And can you hear me, the microphone?
No. You need to use the microphone.
All right. So can you hear me now?
Yes.
Great. Thank you for being here tonight and for hearing this application. I have lived on this street now for going on eight years. I moved in in 2012. I have worked hard to, you know, make the property look really nice, and I'm really excited to present this opportunity that I think promotes the recent change, to promote open space. I hope that you like the changes that we did to accommodate the request of the Historical Preservation Committee, and I think that it makes what I was intending on doing look even better, and I hope you'll be able to support the application. Thank you.
Just again, for the record, I want to clarify, I think when the Historic Preservation Officer was giving her a report, she had mentioned the subject property is not in an actual historic district. It's in a suggested historic district. So I just want to directly reflect that as well. So at this point, I would call our first witness, Joshua Zinder, architect, and I believe Mr. Zinder has testified before this board before, so I could have him present qualification or accept him as certainly as an expert in architecture.
Unless somebody else on the board has a question, I think the architect is very qualified.
Thank you. I think what Mr. Zinder has been before this board before, he has a presentation. I think the easiest thing to do would be for him to go through his slideshow presentation, and then following that, we can answer any questions that the board members may have. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Roselli, do you want, is this going to be marked each slide or as one package?
Well, as a package.
Sure.
We'll mark it as Exhibit A1. And we'll call it slideshow presentation.
Hello, Joshua Zinder. If anyone can hear me. So, in this first image, you see the front of 16 Madison as it exists today. 16 Madison is mid-block in a neighborhood with unique and charming properties, which have a density, historic nature, characterized by pitched roofs, dormers, and porches with rear open yards. The existing house is existing nonconforming. It sits in the sideyard setbacks, and height-to-setback is existing nonconforming as a result as well, as are most of the homes on this street. However, it does have an appropriately scaled rear yard and fits well into the context of the street. We will show the scale of the house before and after the addition and illustrate that the addition is appropriate to the scale of the street and the neighborhood. This lot is exceptionally narrow, even for this neighborhood. Here is an existing site plan showing the 25-foot wide lot.
For the record, that's Slide Number 5 of the presentation.
Please note, this lot is exceptionally narrow. The combined setbacks in the zone are 20 feet, which would allow for a five-foot wide structure if it was to be built as of right. It is more than exceptionally practically difficult. It would be impossible to put a structure on this lot. The cause of the nonconforming nature of this lot is that the house predates the zoning. The current neighborhood character allows this project to be done as an addition in the backyard. However, we hope to pursue a more site-sensitive solution. Maintaining the open space in the rear is more site-sensitive, lower-impact approach. A prime tenet of sustainability is to use what you have. So, to this end, we put the project in the attic. Zoning allows you to do an addition in the setback, but is vague on the question of a dormer. Our project utilizes the existing attic and utilizes three dormers to allow for the required internal head clearances. Here is the existing attic plan. Please note that you can stand in this attic, but the footprint is too small to accommodate living space as it exists. The new plan expands the attic with dormers, allowing for new bedroom, bathroom, and closet. Here is the existing roof plan and the new roof plan with the dormers. You can see the footprint does not change. And just to clarify, so each one of the dormers happens on, you have one on the right side and two on the left side of this image, because they're each on an opposite side of the ridge. Also note on the roof plan that the building footprint does not change, so we don't go past any of the existing walls at all. Here you see the existing elevations, and here are the elevations that were shown to HPC. In the upper left, you see that HPC requested that we alter the Madison Street side dormer, which you see now is a simple shed with a window in it. Here's a streetscape of Madison Street, and you see that when you look at these images, the houses again have gable roofs, they have porches, and of course, they have many dormers up and down the street. Here's the existing house viewed from Madison. This was the original proposal that we provided to HPC, and this is the revised based on HPC requested change. The dormers on the house are part of the scale and character of the street and appropriate to the house and the neighborhood. And with the revision that HPC requested, we actually maintained a little bit more sky in the, from the street. This is the existing side view from further up the street, and this is the side view after we add the other dormer. Here we have the existing rear view. And the rear view with the additional dormers. Our approach to this house is in deference to sustainability, utilizing the existing footprint rather than taking up more space on the lot, which would not have required a variance. The extreme narrow nature of this lot makes this a unique property. Approving this application will advance the MLUL, utilizing the dormers to conserve open space, providing a desirable visual environment along the streetscape, providing a more efficient use of the land. In addition, it has no effect on light and air and open space. As a result, this solution benefits the community and has no negative impact on the public good and does not impair the intent or purpose of the zoning. The dormers provide no detriment to the public good. In fact, they fit well into the character of the street. We believe, based on HPC's approval of this proposal, that it is historically respectful, contextually sensitive, and sustainably appropriate. Thank you.
How many, how many square feet of living space are you adding?
I'm not going to ask you that.
And is there any living space up there now?
So there's no living space up there now. There is storage space up there. The front gable that you see here is actually storage space up there now, and you can stand in that, right at the peak. Yeah, here. Ease your mouth here. 1, 4, 7, 7, 1, 3, 1. Please turn the mat. 161 square feet.
It's just mostly a matter of curiosity. I'm wondering why the revision was suggested to put in the two windows rather than the original proposal on the front. Seems like a good idea, but I...
I could answer that, if you'd like. So, this was the original proposal, and HPC felt that it was a little bit, I would say, maybe pastiche and false on the front of the building, and they felt that it was more appropriate to make it just a simple dormer with the window.
Okay. Thanks.
And as a result, more consistent with the neighborhood.
Sorry?
And as a result, more consistent with the neighborhood.
Got it. Thanks.
Any other questions?
Can I speak to that one? When we took the little gable off to accommodate with what the Historical Preservation Committee had suggested, it was just an open space of clapboard that really was not. It almost would draw your eye more to it, and so the windows were placed in to be in keeping with the double windows, you know, in the front of the house, and we think it's more architecturally pleasing. So, it was really, when they suggested that, and it was a good look, we thought this just enhanced it. So that's why.
Okay. Thanks.
And the commission also supported for a window to be replaced with the circular one that was there. That was part of their memo.
Now, other than, I think, members of board, I think that based upon the evidence presented, that we met the requirements for both the C1 and the C2 variance. I think it's clear that obviously the lots narrowed, so based upon the existing physical conditions, we try to make sure the improvements stayed within the confined existing house. I think, based upon the testimony presented, that because of that narrowness, it had an undue hardship on the applicant's use of the property. The changes suggested enables the applicant to use the property as a continued single residence, and as you can see, based upon the other houses on the block, that the additional dormers are consistent with the property, that obviously the granted variances would not have any negative impact either on that particular block or the zone or the zone plan. And similarly, Mr. Zinder even provided justification under C2, where we met some of the purposes of land use plan by utilizing the existing roof rather than going out in the back, preserving open space, and that, again, when you do the analysis of the negative and positive criteria, the positives clearly outweigh the negative. I would say, in this instance, there is no real negative impact if this board were to grant the variance being requested tonight.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you. I'd like to open this up to the public. Any comments on this application? Okay. Seeing none. Close the public portion of the hearing. Comments on the board?
I walked the neighborhood, and I felt that, looking at your proposal and your approach, I thought it was in keeping with the neighborhood, and it is a very narrow lot. I felt that I do like the difference with the window. I think it's a much better architectural approach, and overall, yeah, the houses on the lot, on the block, all look very, very similar, and I think that the additions don't negatively impact that at all. In fact, I think it's quite positive, so I'd be in favor of it.
Anyone else?
I agree with you on the architecture of the proposed addition. I think it's in keeping with the neighborhood. I think this is one of the nicest houses on the block, actually.
Steve, I can't hear you. Microphone.
Sorry. I think this is one of the nicest houses on the block. Okay. Any other comments? Somebody like to make a motion?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
Under C1, I guess.
C1?
Yep.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davich?
Yes.
Mr. Floy?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tendanbaum?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Start off.
I'll note for the record, the notice thing is in order and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application.
Thank you.
Good evening. Ena Chikunova and Alexander Chikunov, our owners of 168 Geo and they are seeking a floor area variance to permit a garage. Additional bulk variances, C1 and C2 are requested for front yard setback, side yard setback, and garage setback from front porch. Excuse me, seeking a D4 FAR variance to maintain the footprint of the existing garage. Property's located in the R6 Zone and subject to the use in bulk regulations in accordance with 10B 253, 255, and 246 of the former Princeton Township Land Use Ordinance. Existing single-family use is permitted as a right. The house on the property is non-compliant with respect to the required 15-foot setback. The existing's 10 feet 8. The applicant was approved for a large addition, pretty much a house redo, in July of 2019 and the plans proposed eliminating 140-square-foot front portion of the attached garage and utilizing that floor area to allow for a larger addition to the home. The approved plans call for the reconstruction of the roof at a lower height. The applicant now wants to retain the original garage. This requires a floor area ratio variance as well as a variance from the 16-foot setback of the garage from the front porch. The applicant is also seeking a variance to permit a 1-foot 2-inch overhang on the garage which encroaches into the required side yard setback. The proposed overhangs do match the new overhangs on the left side of the house. So the FAR variance, the permitted FAR in this zone is 25%. The, the approved, at the time of the addition, was 24.9. Retaining that garage results in an FAR of 26%. And I'll just go through the FAR. We talk to, talk of them often, but while technically a D variance, the Cox Land Use notes the applicant shall not be required to demonstrate that the site is uniquely suited for more intensive development, but that it can accommodate the problems associated with the increased floor area. This requires five affirmative votes. The garage setback, the retention of the garage does not comply with the required 16-foot setback which was enacted with the neighborhood character ordinance. The required setback is 12, 4 feet from, and the variance request would be 12 feet because the requirement's 16. And the overhang into the side yard setback, the required side yard is 15 feet, the existing's 10 feet 8, and then with that 1.2 overhang, it will be 9 foot 6. And they've requested consideration under the C1 and the C2. And that's my report. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to address them.
I have one. In the photograph that we see on the screen, the garage on the left, that was going to be taken down.
A portion of it, yep.
A portion of it. So right now it looks like from this photograph that it's being worked on.
I just think that it's the siding. I don't think, I'll let the applicant speak about that, but.
So it's Mr. De Cruz, right?
Yeah.
And Ms.
I am Ena Chikunova.
Yeah. If you would both raise your right hand, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening? We'll be truthful. Thank you.
So to answer the question, yes, we have.
The microphone, please.
Sorry. So to answer the question, yes, the project has started construction. The majority of the work on the main house has been completed during the construction process and it's been a struggle to this, you know, to decide whether Ena wanted to get a variance for the garage or not. We originally tried to do the project without having to get a variance. That's why we originally submitted the project for the renovation during the construction. It's a new house for Ena, she just bought it. She realized that it was very, going to be very important for her to have the larger garage.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, yeah. No, but just to finish, to answer the question, so we know we're going to do something to the garage if, right now it's, the garage and its volume is exactly the way it was previously. The only work that's been done to it is work that's been required to allow for the renovation of the other portion of the house. So depending on what happens today, then the work will continue on the garage. But it exists now as it originally did before any construction work was started, other than removing the siding.
Okay, but when the, when you made the original application in July of last year, as a trade-off to increase the size of the home, you were going to take part of the garage out?
That is correct.
So is there, well, okay, so, so now you don't want to do that. You want to leave the garage in place.
Correct.
Obviously, you're not going to, you're not going to take off any part of the addition that you put on based on the approval you got.
That is also correct, yes.
Okay, so maybe as part of your presentation, you can explain what changed. I know you just touched on it briefly, but explain what changed from then to now.
Right.
Okay. So, please begin.
Excuse me, do you, do you want to say anything more about this, Derek, before we start?
No, if you have any questions, I'll address them.
Okay, that's fine. Okay, please.
Is it on here?
Oh, good evening, I'm Ena Chikunova, my homeowner. You know, it was a struggle from the very beginning, so with my husband, so we wanted to keep the garage and then we convinced ourselves we can leave with one car garage. But you know, we had, we spent a lot of time outside the country, the whole summer, and we realized the street is rather busy and so in terms of safety, we want to keep two, our two cars in the garage. That is why we changed our mind over the time, so we just realized we can't leave with one car garage. It is, it is over the time because we get familiar with the neighborhood, with the street, it's quite a busy street. And so, and another reason we are applying for a variance is we are over the budget for renovation. So in the course of construction, we realize that the walls are in a very bad condition. We have to change all walls. So we had to do additional works in the basement, waterproofing, and insulation. So keeping the garage, existing garage, it's a big saving for us. So, and we can't move it backwards as you can see from the slides, so because it is a beautiful mature tree just behind the garage, it gives shade to us, to our neighbors, and helps to regulate underground water which is a big problem for this area. So we appreciate your positive decision and so John will give you details of the application. Thank you.
So, just to continue, obviously the first slide shows the condition of the house now as it's under construction. We have started the renovation of the existing house. This slide shows the original house before any renovation was done with the existing garage and you can see that the garage basically stays as it was previously, although we have renovated the remainder of the, of the house. Just go through the numbers and the, the variances. So the, the green, let me see, so the green portion of the house here is the, the original approved plan. And so that's, this is the plan that was approved, sorry. The little purple section here was the portion of the garage that we were originally going to remove, that we are now asking to retain. And in addition to that, we're also, sorry, asking to, if we can add a roof overhang to the side of the existing garage so that the roof overhang on the garage matches the rest of the house. Sorry, not sure why that keeps happening. Again, to go through the numbers, so the allowable FAR is 25%. By retaining the portion of the garage that we originally were going to remove, it pushes the FAR up to 26%. So we're in essence asking for a 1% variance in FAR which is approximately 131 square feet. In addition to that, there is the, the front yard, or the front-facing garage setback requirement from the main facade of the house. So the existing setback was zero. The house in, the other houses in the neighborhood also have garage doors that are flush to the, to the front facade of the house. The required was 16 feet. The plan that we originally submitted was 14 foot 8 and now the new proposed would be a four-foot setback because we've also added an open porch to the front of the house. Our secondary variance, again, request would, would be to add that roof overhang to the, to the side of the garage. Here we have the plan that was originally approved. The green section is the, this entire portion here is the existing garage. This was the portion that we were removing. Now this here shows the portion that we would like to retain. To show that same configuration in more detail, I don't know why this, again, the purple is the existing portion of the garage that we like to retain. This is that four-foot setback. We get a four-foot credit for the covered porch on the front. The 14 what was originally approved and the 16-foot is the required. From the side yard in terms of adding the, a new overhang to the, to the, to the side of the roof, the required side yard is 15 feet. Obviously, we're encroaching on that now. The existing side yard is 10 foot 8 and with the new roof overhang, it would reduce the side yard to 9 foot 6. This is the same information but looking at the house from the front, front facade. Again, the green is the original approved plan with the reduced garage. The purple would be retaining the existing garage as it previously exists, existed and exists today, with the little yellow section showing the, the 1 foot 2 new roof overhang. Again, same information looking at it from the side. This is the approved side yard elevation with the reduced garage size and then to retain the original size of the garage shown in purple. So the differential is the area shown in purple. Again, same information shown from the, from the rear yard. So reasons for the variance, we, again, we'd like to keep the existing garage. It's already there. We know that we had previously submitted and took FAR away or used FAR that existed in the garage to make the house a little bit bigger. Since starting construction and going back and forth whether to get a variance or not, it's come, you know, it's become apparent to Ena that it was important to maintain the two-car garage and that's why we're here asking for, for the variance. This little diagram shows how two cars would, or one car would fit in the garage. So the green area is the reduced garage size. As you can see, only one car would fit. If we were able to retain the original size of the original garage, then they would be able to park two cars. And again, this is important in that Ena and her family are away for extended period of times and it's important to them to be able to park both of their cars in the garage, especially that on Guyatt Street, it faces the, the high school football field. Witherspoon Elementary School is there, so there's lots and lots of activity going on on that street. In terms of looking at other alternatives, in terms of getting a two-car garage, the only other option would be to build a new two-car garage in the rear yard. To do that, there's a large mature tree that would need to get removed. It would obviously decrease the existing size of the rear yard. Again, because there's so much activity in the front yard, the rear yard is quite precious, you know, to the house and to maintaining some privacy. And obviously, it would increase, it would increase construction costs and would also increase impervious area to build a new garage in the rear yard and also a driveway to get to it. In terms of maintaining the character of the neighborhood, the neighbors to the right and left currently both have garages and garage doors that are either flush to the front of the house or project beyond the front of the house. So in keeping the existing garage, we would be consistent with the rest of the neighborhood. In terms of our secondary request for the roof overhang on the garage, it's, here's just to show that in essence, we would want to keep the overall character and aesthetic of the house so that the existing garage would have the same overhouse, the same overhang as the, as the rest of the house. That's it.
Okay. Questions from the board?
I'm, you have my absolute sympathies. I have no, I, in all the years I've been on here and living in Princeton, I have yet to hear of a project that does not run over budget, so, sorry to hear you're in that position. I do, we as a board take each one of these properties individual. We hear each case on an individual basis. We look at individual facts. All that being said, we do have to establish a precedent, which means that we have to be able to justify whatever decisions we make. If there's an appeal or if other people come before us, they need to know, okay, wait a minute, you decided this in this situation, you decided that in another situation. You are specifically applying for a D variance. The rules for the D variance say that you have to demonstrate the special reasons for a D variance. Can you please further develop that? Because I'm not hearing a whole lot of special reasons. And in particular, I, I know we're not going to be using the garage for a public good. It's not going to be a school or a hospital or public housing. The area where it appears as if you may have an argument for us to be able to grant you the D variance is when you talk about undue hardship. If you're required to use the property in compliance with the permitted uses in the zone. Undue hardship of the fact that you've gone over budget, that's a tough precedent for us to be able to establish here tonight. Again, every single project that I've ever heard of goes over budget. So there's nothing unique here. So help us, help you by giving us the grounds for granting you the D variance because thus far, I'm not hearing them.
So, you know, one of the reasons is the garage is already there. We know that we were removed the portion of the garage to get more FAR into the house, but we're asking for a 1% increase over what's the allowable. We feel that that's a reasonable request. And again, it's, 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 I mean, the, basically the garage is already there and we don't feel that it makes sense to, to, to shrink it when the hardship is that then you would not be able to park two cars in the garage.
The reason why we're applying for this because it's, we feel unsafe really to keep the car for the whole summer because we go to, out of the country twice a year for the whole summer and then for, in Christmas, so just for substantial amount of time. And so, you know, we feel unsafe just to keep the car in the street. It's really on the street because it's really busy, busy area. Didn't realize it before. It's the main reason why we're applying for this. And you know, it is pretty close to the neighbors, so if we just, you know, this, will be hardship for neighbors if we start against this demolition of the garage so close to their borders. So he would be happy if we keep the garage. It's absolutely true.
Are there issues with crime in that neighborhood?
Issues with crime?
No.
You know, it's not crime. It's just very busy street. It's so, it's, you know, it's busy street, it's many cars pass on. I don't know, I haven't lived there, but so I got a feeling during the course of construction, it's not as quiet as the place we live now, and just we feel uncomfortable.
No, but you want the garage to protect your cars when you're not there, is how I hear it.
Yeah, yeah, I don't know. I don't think it's more, it's something just unsafe. Just downtown, it's a bit different, you know, it's not residential area. It's busy.
It's busy?
Yeah.
I don't think it's a crime.
No, it's no crime. It's no crime. It's no crime there.
It's a block-long area where
I think it's just-
parents drop off their kids and pick them up.
Right.
And it's busy for all of an hour and a half.
Yeah, probably just uncomfortable for us just to keep it outside for the whole summer. You know, we have to look for place to keep the car just to move it there, you know.
So nothing really has changed since you made the original application, with the exception of the fact that you just want a bigger garage. Now, I mean, you came before the board, you asked to build a bigger house and a smaller garage to offset that change, and now you're saying you want the garage that you had originally, that you traded off the area in the house for.
Yes, it's true.
And there's no compelling reason other than you want it?
Well, I think one of the compelling-
Well-
Speaking to the microphone, please.
Sure. I guess one of the compelling reasons during the construction, as we were debating whether to keep, you know, whether to come here for a variance or not, is really that the garage is already there. And so-
It was already there when you came before the board, the original. That didn't change.
Can I ask a question, Derek? What, with the second car, I guess the second car is not in, going over the parking setback if it were in the driveway, correct?
I think there's an 18-foot space between the 25-foot setback and where the old garage started, so it would be okay.
Mr. DeCruz, just two questions for you. These slides, I assume you'd like them to be one exhibit. Shall we call that Exhibit A1?
Okay.
And I should have asked you originally, you are a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, correct?
I am.
And you were the project architect?
Correct.
And I'm sure you've seen Mr. Bridger's memo, and you'll see at the very end of it, he does list purposes of zoning, which potentially may provide a basis for variances. Is there anything on that list that you want to speak to?
I mean, obviously, item I, to promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. Again, I think, in my opinion, that keeping the garage fits perfectly into the neighborhood. It doesn't, you know, impact the streetscape, doesn't impact the light and air. It is consistent with the neighbors. So I think if, you know, it fits into the neighborhood. Yeah, proportionally it fits the house and proportionally it fits the neighborhood.
The microphone?
Can't hear you.
Oh, no, no. When we saw how small the new garage, when the house, the main building was constructed, we see how small the garage, newly proposed garage, comparing to the tall of the house, the height of the house. So it was like disproportional. Now it looks, as it is, it looks much better in terms of-
Yeah, I mean, it's a matter of opinion, I guess. I understand what you're saying, but, okay. Anything else you'd like to add? Okay. Questions from the board?
I have a question for Mr. Bridger, and it's regarding front yard setback. With this project, and I understand when you go away, you'll park the cars in the garage. I don't know when you're home, if you'll do like most people and don't put it in the garage, and then if it's going to then protrude in the front yard setback, if there is that obligation. This is form of township, right?
I mean, the existing garage fits two cars, and then when they removed a portion of the garage, it fit in, it's an eight-by, or nine-by-18 space, and it accommodated that.
Yeah.
If they choose to park there, as you know, it's voluntary.
Right, right. But if the garage ends up being more setback from the porch, and the variance was granted, there's more space to park the cars outside, which a lot of people do. You know, I'd be shocked if you park both your cars every day in there.
In tandem.
So the setback on the garage, if you do set it back, gives more space to not violate.
So with a car-
I'm sorry.
So with a car in the garage and another parked in front of the garage, that would still be, it parked outside with the reduced size of the garage already approved, that wouldn't violate the setback?
Correct.
Okay.
It wouldn't.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone else like to ask any questions? Okay.
I have a question. I wonder if there's, for me, a sticking point right now is that it's only 1%, but it is 1% over if we approve this. And I just wonder if there's any, if I understand it correctly, and if there's any way that there could be some adjustment in the construction that's going on right now that would take that away? Does that make, you know what I'm saying?
I mean, 1% is not a tremendous amount, but when the original, I keep going back to the original application and furthering what Harlan, Mr. Tannenbaum said. When the application came in, it was a trade-off. Yes, you know, we'll reduce the size of the garage, but we'd like the house a little bigger. And if there now, eight months later, is there a reason other than we just want to keep the garage, that, you know, we should grant the variance? I mean, as Mr. Tannenbaum says, give us the information to help you. And, you know, it's just not a matter of, I decided I didn't want to cut the garage down. I mean, aesthetically, I mean, I understand what you're saying. I think a smaller garage would look better. But that's my opinion, and that's irrelevant in this case as to the aesthetics. Okay. Yeah, I'm going to do that. All right, so, go ahead. Do you want to say something?
No, I mean, yeah, it's a very small, I understand your question and I understand your point. It's a very small variance that we're asking for of 1%. It's 130 square feet, and that 130 square feet will make a very large impact on their use of the house relative to their being able to park the cars.
Okay. As I said before, you came before us before and made a different argument. You made an argument to increase the size of the house and decrease the size of the garage.
When you say we came before you before-
Well, you had an approval.
We have an approval, yeah.
You have an approval previously.
Okay, sorry, yep.
Yeah, okay. All right. Okay. Anything else? All right, let's open this up to the public. Does anybody want to comment on this application? Okay. So we'll close the public portion. And now, comments from the board.
Well, I am troubled by all the things you said, Steve. But I also found somewhat compelling the pictures of the neighborhood and find that this does not, this would more or less fit in with the neighborhood character. Does that make any difference?
What I said was, I agree with most of the things Steve has said, but I found the pictures of the neighborhood to be compelling to the point that this does not violate the character of the neighborhood. And, but my question is to you all, is does that make a difference or not? I'm not sure.
That's a good one. The Neighborhood Character Ordinance talks about garage placement now. And one thing that, obviously, several things that it says, garages shouldn't face the street. Obviously, this is an existing garage. And to the extent you make a move to address that, given this condition, you diminish the size of the garage and you push the garage back and not made it a prominent feature on the front of the house. Now, I understand many houses, not only in this neighborhood, but all throughout the community have that. But again, that's a, that's a change that, you know, the council enacted a while ago, not too long ago, but the issue is to change, you know, the prominence of the garage facing the street. So, you know, again, I think, in my opinion, that a smaller garage is more appropriate. I do agree with Mr. Floyd. I mean, this is going to be, this is a tandem garage. And, you know, it's a little awkward to put two cars in it anyway. You've got to get the car that's further back out, you have to move both cars. So the tendency may be, and that's, you know, I'm not saying it'll happen, the tendency may be just to leave a car outside. So, I mean, and then on the other side of that, it's only 1%. But it was 1% when the application came before us in July. So-
Well, that really troubles me, that we approved something earlier, and we may have well approved it in part because of the smaller garage, because of the ordinance.
No, just a point of clarification. This was approved by me, not by the board. You just, you know, it didn't come before you guys. It was as of right.
Okay. But the trade-off, the trade-off was a smaller garage for a bigger house. So that was the trade-off.
I think the fact that now the porch is coming beyond the face of the garage actually improves it relative to, you know, some of these neighboring houses where it's all flush. I'm a little bit bothered by the process of the trade-off and then coming back, but it is existing. It does have the, you know, the facade coming forward with the porch, and it's 1%.
Yeah. Yes.
Well, I'm actually going to support the application. I believe the 1% is 1%. It's not much of anything. It is the existing condition. It's, there's an interesting contrast with the neighborhood character rules. But if the rule is out of character with the neighborhood, I have a little more sympathy for the applicant. I think it doesn't, what they want to do does not take it out of character. Also, they gave, you know, reasons. They didn't want to extend it in the back because of the tree. The tree does have buds on it. It's a ragged-looking tree, but it's alive, and it's winter time now. And the whole thing with, that would cut into the backyard open space. So I plan to support the application for those reasons.
All right. If there are no other comments, and you don't want to-
Let me ask you just a question of clarification. The option is that we either approve this and the garage remains standing, or if we don't, the garage is torn down? Help me understand. Where are, I am completely in accord with Mr. Floyd. I very much want to support this application. It's only 1%. It's 131 square feet. Logically, it makes perfect sense. I want to support it. You've really tied my hands by not giving me any reason of undue hardship or something else like that to be able to support it. I asked before, give me something. I want to support this. So please help me, because I want to. It's 1%. This is ludicrous. So, that being said, help me understand the undue hardship. You live in Princeton by the high school. It's one of the safest neighborhoods in the country. Security is not really an issue. That one I'm not buying. The fact that the cars will be parked outside during the summer in front of a school where there are no students, also, not buying security. Overrun of profits, or overrun of costs. Hello? Is this, I mean, seriously? Have you ever seen HGTV? There's not a single episode where somebody's not blowing their budget. So please, give me something to work with. I want to help you. You're not giving me anything.
Maybe it will help. So, you know, this construction, as you mentioned, it is a cool area. So we try to finish the construction as soon as possible, not to bother just neighborhood. And so if we, so if you don't let us keep it, as it is, this is a new round of construction, demolition, dust, it will, I mean, it's more trouble for people around.
The high school's undergoing renovations now. It's undergoing renovations for the next century, it seems like. So again, let's figure something out that can work. That one doesn't.
I can't invent anything, but this is what's really sincere. This was just, goes from my heart.
It's not a question of hard sincerity, and it's not a debate. Help.
Maybe you can.
I mean, I think maybe the hardship is that for a very small allowance, that the benefit to the homeowner is, you know, for a 1% going over, she gets 99% benefit of the use of the garage. So we're asking for a very small accommodation that is going to create a very big impact in the way that the house is used.
Okay, I appreciate that. All of the zoning ordinances and rules don't really care a great deal about the individual homeowner benefit. It talks about the community, so can you perhaps speak to that a little bit?
I guess the other way to look at it, that there's no, there's no negative impact. The garage was already there. It's, you know, it's there right now. Leaving it as is has zero impact on the neighborhood, the community, the school, the high school, anybody that walks up and down that street. There's absolutely no impact.
If we do not approve, that the garage would not be left as is? What would happen to the existing garage if we do not approve this?
So the difference is, if you approve it, the garage stays as is in the size that it is now. If you deny it, then we have to go back to our previous as-of-right approval where we're going to remove 10'8" of the front of the garage, and basically take it from a two-car garage to a one-car garage.
Okay. Okay.
You'd have to actually demolish most of the garage, because the roof line's very different as well, right?
Correct. So, we'd be lowering the roof line also.
So, I mean, just to help you out, I mean, from a sustainable standpoint, I mean, not demolishing and rebuilding, it's cheapest way to be sustainable is to keep what's there. So, I mean, from that perspective, for a community good, it's more sustainable to keep it than it is to tear it down and build a new one.
We're really trying here. I mean, I hope you understand. We're really trying.
I appreciate your questions.
Let me ask you this.
With all of that, I think that bending over backwards and stretching and contorting ourselves in every imaginable way, I am able to support a D variance in these very, very unique, particular, peculiar circumstances. And I would, if anyone else cares to speak, if not, I would move to approve.
Well, okay, go ahead.
No, it's okay. I was going to second the motion.
Okay, yeah, before that. I understand and respect what Mr. Floyd said. When push comes to shove, it's 1 percent. And 1 percent is not significant. Ms. Chen brought up a good point. The porch sort of offsets the front of it a little bit from an aesthetic standpoint. And I think at this stage, I think the 1 percent is not a big problem. And even though I'm not crazy about it, I would support it.
I second the motion.
Board members, just a question for you. Remember, they need three variances. They need the FAR, then they need a variance for the garage setback, and an overhang variance. So, the motion to approve, is, are we doing the, is it your preference to do them separately, these variances? Or is this, the motion is to approve all variances?
Do you need the motion?
I don't think he did.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I thought Mr. Tenenbaum did. I apologize.
Yeah, I was seconding it. Yeah, I don't think that the, it seems in the grand scheme of things that the overall plan, having a little bit of an overhang is not going to make that much of a difference, even though it is cutting into the side yard setback. Overall, I think that with the sustainable factors and the fact that it is setback off the house, and it isn't keeping the neighborhood character, unfortunately, the way this all route came out, where we're giving and then taking back, isn't the optimum way of doing this. But I think overall, I think it meets a C for that and a D for the overhang.
So, we approve all requested variances? The C2?
C2.
Okay. We have a motion and a second?
Yes.
Okay. Gloria?
Who's second?
Steve.
Okay.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Coulson?
Yes.
Mr. Davitt?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mrs. Shriver?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yep.
Ms. Chen?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Welcome to the house when it's finished. It's a big party. Oh, please speak Russian.
Keep both cars in the garage now.
Both cars in the garage.
Huh? Sure. We're going to take a couple of minutes here, and then we'll restart. Your point was very good.
But actually, if they had done...
The question is, how do I get this up? All right. Shomani. But the question is, how do I... What?
I don't know, Jim. Right now, I can't. Got to get this up, all right? So, you've got to let me, don't need a lawyer. Do not tire.
Fucking hell, what the hell is this?
I'm trying to get this up. I don't know. Okay, so you have it set to two screens. So, you have one screen side by side. So, you've got to go to displays.
To...
Displays.
Oh, right.
Or you could just click and drag it over to there, but then you won't see it here. You want a mirror?
Oh, yeah.
Go down here.
Oh, yeah.
And then, one of these buttons is here. It would be display.
Yeah, yeah, you're right.
And then you go, devices, printers.
Shoot.
And then, I think you've got to scroll down here to get displays. Well, then, maybe it's devices. So, try devices.
Printer scanners, it's screens, all right.
It should be displays. Go back up, try it.
There?
No, it wouldn't be scanners. Back, properly to the other devices. No, it's not it either. You need to find, displays.
Yeah, I did this. I'm trying to remember. Let's go back one more. Phone, devices, screens. Block screens?
No. Background, colors, apps.
Yeah, it is set up for tablet screens.
System display. Go to the top one, click that.
Ah, yeah.
And then click display, first one there.
Oh.
And now, you want to...
Identify? Okay. All right, let's, oh, we're missing one of our members here. Hang on.
Drag your...
Oh, you're accusing yourself. Okay. Let's start again. Our next application is 7 Madison Street, case number Z 2020-807, block 2803, lot 120 in the R4 zone.
All board members, the notice thing is in order, and the board has jurisdiction to hear the application.
Okay.
Good evening again. Stephen and Jenny Gilbert are the owners of 7 Madison Street. They're seeking C1 and C2 variance relief to permit reconstruction of the two-story rear section of the house, an exception to the required side yard setback and height-to-setback ratios. Subject property is located in the R4 zone in the former Princeton borough. The existing single-family house with a detached senior accessory apartment are permitted uses as-of-right. The lot's not complying with the required 60-foot lot width. The existing lot width's 34.32. And the house is not complying with regard to the required 8-foot smaller side yard setback. Existing's 1.9. It's not complying with a 12-foot larger side yard setback. Existing's 8.72. And it's not complying with the required 20-foot combined setback. The existing's 10.6 feet. And height-to-setback ratio required is 3 to 1, and existing is 10.7 to 1. The accessory structure also exceeds the height requirements, which is 15 feet, and it's 18 and a half feet. You may recall this property from a variance that was granted in 2018 to permit the enlargement of a second-story garage dormer to permit ingress and a door to get onto the second floor. And that area was converted to a secondary residence as-of-right. A copy of the resolution is attached to the memo. Applicants are proposing to demolish an approximately 1,100-square-foot two-story section of the house, obtaining an office, kitchen, family room on the first floor, and a bedroom and bath on the second, and proposing a new 1,144-square-foot two-story addition, which will contain a kitchen and family room on the first floor, and a master bedroom and bath on the second floor. The addition will follow the existing setback on the northern elevation of the house and then be inset 2 feet, 10 feet, 2 feet, 10 inches, excuse me. A masonry patio is proposed on the southern elevation. The two-story addition requires a smaller side yard setback variance, as your requirement's 8 feet. The proposal is 2.23 feet, and requires a combined side yard setback variance, an exception to the 20-foot required. The proposed will be 10 foot, 0.95 feet. And then, the height-to-setback ratio of 3 to 1 will need a variance, too. The proposal is 8.6 to 1. And they've requested both the C1 and the C2 consideration. That's my memo. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to address them.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I also have Elizabeth Kim here. This is, again, just like the other side of Madison, and they suggested historic district and HPC. We viewed it at their meeting Monday night, I believe.
Yes, thank you. So, this again came to HPC as a courtesy review in the recommended historic district of the central residential historic district of the master plan. As Mr. Bridger indicated, the applicant came before HPC on Monday, this past Monday, the 24th. The application proposes to demolish about half of the house, which is actually the rear portion of the house, and rebuild a new two-story addition. The front facade of the house will remain unaltered. The proposed improvements will be visible from Madison Street right of way, primarily from the front and south side elevations. As you're looking at this picture that's on your screen right now, you can see that there are the two sides of the building, the left side of the house, which is the north side, is narrower, it's closer to the property line and closer to the residence. The south side is a little bit more open, having a larger area to the side property line. The new windows that they're proposing are, there are two new windows on the north side of the house, of the addition, with the second floor, with the north side elevation. And they're actually proposed closer to the rear and away from the street, so they will be less visible. The south side elevation will have two, four, and five compound window systems, and a new French door with a mounted light fixture above it. The new rear construction will have a perimeter roof with a hardy plank ship block siding, and the central section of the addition will be clad with stucco and have a new low-pitch roof with skylights. The new construction of the rear portion of the house is, for the most part, being built on the same footprint of the area that's going to be demolished. HPC felt the plans proposed by the applicant is going to retain the streetscape, really because of the addition mass placement, and its height is going to be very similar to what's existing now, and because they're going to be retaining the front facade of the house, which is going to be the most visible from the streetscape. The demolition and replacement are taking place solely on the rear of the property as well. And they felt that this improvement is going to be compatible with the remaining structure of the property and the other buildings along the street and the streetscape. So, HPC did vote to recommend to your board the approval of the variances, and to help facilitate the reconstruction of the demolition of the portion of the house which the applicant is proposing. There was a member of HPC who had a concern about the windows on the south elevations for the first and second floor. They felt that the ganging was not perhaps as compatible to the existing building as he would like. The applicant did suggest that they would put a fence and a arbor treatment on that section, which would address the first floor, and they were satisfied that that would do a good job as far as shielding some of those changes to that side of the building. And that's it. If you have any questions.
Was that, well, when you make your presentation, you can talk about that fence.
Oh, and I do just want to include that the support that the HPC made for the fence and the arbor, that if it did require a variance, I mean, this was just something that was talked about at the meeting, that they would also support that if the board felt that that was appropriate.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Would you like to start?
If you would both raise your right hand, you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful. Thank you.
There are really four, thanks, four things that I want you to keep in mind as we go through this.
Excuse me. Can you identify yourself?
Pardon me?
Identify yourself.
I'm Steve Gilbert. Steve Gilbert, Jenny Hartshorn. And we are the homeowners.
Okay, that's fine.
I'm not a lawyer. I don't pretend to be.
Okay, no problem.
Or an architect, or... So, four things that I'd like everybody to keep in mind as we go through this. It's an undersized, narrow lot, much like Lori Name's lot. You know, the strict application of the ordinance would limit the house width, in this case, to 14 feet. So, it would be, I guess it would be like a double-deck bus, is what you could build there as-of-right. The work that we're doing does not increase nonconformance, which is sort of a double negative. I mean, what we're doing is making it more conforming. The proposed work is an improvement to a property that's in real disrepair, and I'll take you through that. And we've also made the effort to speak to all our neighbors, share the plans, and, you know, all have expressed their pleasure with what we're doing. The, you were just looking at Madison Street earlier. What's interesting is, this is probably one of the smallest houses on the street, but it's one of the biggest lots. We're really blessed to have almost a double lot. And what's also interesting about this is that it is double-loaded, or it's bracketed by two streets, Madison Street and the Grand Avenue, called Branch Avenue, to its other This is the lot itself, and as Derek mentioned, there is an accessory structure in the back, which is a two-story building. We were in for a variance a year ago, almost exactly, to put, to convert the upper loft into an apartment, which we've completed now. Yeah, all we needed was a variance for a dormer.
Yeah, a small dormer, yeah.
The, this house was built in 1906, I believe, Elizabeth, is what you figured out, in that it's, it was built in three or four different phases. The front half is a wood structure. The rear half, which is the structure that we're needing to take down and rebuild, is brick. And then, you can see that accessory building way in the back, the garage building. That's the garage building in the rear. And Branch Alley is behind it with two garage doors. And so, this property is sort of double-loaded. You know, you have, in terms of parking, you can come in from both ends. And the other thing, because of this building, none of our neighbors behind us can actually see the rear of our house. This is the back of the main house, and this is the section that we're going to be taking... by two streets, Madison Street and the Grand Avenue, called Branch Avenue, to its other This is the lot itself, and as Derek mentioned, there is an accessory structure in the back, which is a two-story building. We were in for a variance a year ago, almost exactly, to convert the upper loft into an apartment, which we've completed now. Yeah, all we needed was a variance for a dormer.
Yeah, a small dormer, yeah.
The, this house was built in 1906, I believe, Elizabeth, or is what you figured out, in that it's, it was built in three or four different phases. The front half is a wood structure, the rear half, which is the structure that we're needing to take down and rebuild, is brick. And then you can see that accessory building way in the back, the garage building. That's the garage building in the rear, and Branch Alley is behind it with two garage doors. And so this property is sort of double-loaded, you know, you have, in terms of parking, you can come in from both ends. And the other thing, because of this building, none of our neighbors behind us can actually see the rear of our house. This is the back of the main house, and this is the section that we're going to be taking And that is the section where we're having some pretty significant structural issues. There's some ground settlement. Previous owners have tried to correct it, and I remember going, when we bought it a year and a half ago, I did go through the building department and looked at the construction records that were done, and, you know, there were efforts to stabilize the foundation, you know, as recently as 1999.
Did you ever make a determination on why it is settling?
No. No, I don't really, we did bring in an engineer. I mean, our original hope was to keep this house entirely. We love this house. And we brought an engineer in and a number of architects, and the consensus was that you really need to take it down. I mean, here you have an interior shot of a portion of the house showing the settlement. This is the first floor. This is the first floor as well, and there's buckling going on there.
No, it looks like it's in bad shape, but again, you're going to rebuild it, and I assume you're going to pull the foundation out also?
Yes.
Yeah, so you're gonna...
Oh, absolutely. It's a rubble foundation. It's not in great condition. That could be one good reason why you've got settlement there. You know, this is the second floor.
Sure.
And this is the roof, which is pretty funky. You know, there are multiple roofs, and again, it was built over, in different phases, over many different years. So at the, you know, at the end of the day, after kind of walking through an engineer and architects, the consensus was, you know, there's, it really makes sense to take this thing down and rebuild it. So this really, you know, shows what we're looking to do. The front half is going to remain unchanged, although I should say there's significant work we're going to have to do in the front half of the house. I mean, a couple of architects suggested we take the whole thing down. But we are going to keep the front half. We are putting in a whole new beam, which is, you probably know, will require a lot of work in terms of building temporary walls inside to provide bracing while we take out the beam and replace it. And then the back half to the right is the portion that we're taking down. What we're doing is shifting that very back wing to the south or to the left. So we're shifting that very back wing to the left. We're aligning the roof. And the other thing which I'll point out in this photo is how much lower we are from our neighbors. This is the site plan, existing on the left, proposed on the right, and then that red circle shows really the purpose of this variance, which is, you know, the setback, side yard setback, and then what, and then the adjustment in the height to setback ratio, both of which are going to be improvements over what it is today. We're moving it close, that back wing toward the center of the lot, away from our neighbor, which our neighbor was quite pleased to hear. The only reason they're not here to support it is they're in South Africa for two years. This is the plan, which I know it's a lot easier to read what you have in front of you. This is the front elevation, which is not going to change. This is the south elevation, which is not changing. This is the rear elevation, and the change there is that area to the right, which is going to be shifting, it's gonna, basically, we're centering that back wing on the property, away from the property line. And this is the north elevation, and we are actually removing windows on the first floor that look out on the neighbor, and that was another thing that they were pleased to So, again, you know, what we're doing here is actually improving conformance. We are, you know, it's something that the neighbors are pleased with, and we think that a, you know, our requested variance is justified for those reasons. Thank you.
Mr. Gilbert, do you want to consider this all one exhibit? We can call it Exhibit A1?
Sorry?
Your slide presentation?
Yeah.
We'll call it Exhibit A1?
That's fine.
All right, and did you take these photos yourself?
I did.
You did?
Yeah.
All right.
And Claudia has the file on this.
Anything else?
No, that's it. Thank you.
I have one, minor. Will the, will the building code allow you to put a new window in the second floor with 1'9 setback? Just a question, that's not relevant to...
Sorry, what's the question?
That you're showing a new window on the second floor on the left side of the house in the new addition.
There really is not, that's actually the same windows that were there.
Well, the only question I have, and it's not totally relevant to my decision on the zoning, will the building code, not the zoning code, allow you to have glass on a wall that close to the property line? That's through your architect to determine.
Okay, well, yeah, I'll talk to Mark Brahaney.
Yeah.
About that.
Yeah, okay. That was the only question I had. Questions? None?
I just have a question, in curiosity, just the shape of that, of the area where your bedroom is, that's kind of an interesting shape, is that, is there any reason for that?
I think I, it shows up in the site plan, I'm sorry. If you look at the property, right now, it goes straight out and looks at where we keep our garbage, in the back left corner. We really are trying to orient the view.
Toward the waterfall?
Further to the right.
I got you.
Toward the waterfall, which is a fountain, which our previous owner put in, which is quite unique.
But yeah, looking at that, look at that image of that, of the bedroom, and then looking at the way the roof has to go in order to fit that shape, it's interesting. But I can see why you do it now.
Good job. It's mine.
Yeah, it's cool. All right, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, let's open it up to the public to see if anybody would like to comment on this application. Please identify yourself and be sworn in.
Good evening. My name is Rob Rothenberg. I'm an attorney with Rothenberg and Associates LLC. I'm here tonight to represent Rebecca Cox and John McCory individually, and as trustees of the McCory-Cox Revocable Trust. They are the owners of 9 Madison Street. So they are the immediate neighbors. They, want me to swear? So they've asked me to come before you to express their concerns with this application. Specifically, there's seven concerns that they have of various degrees of severity. Their concerns are the following. One is this neighborhood, and specifically these houses, have had significant water, flooding issues, and water seepage issues, and that's particularly true, to my knowledge, with regard to these two homes. There's a concern that after this construction and this project is completed, that that issue will be worsened, as it will affect my client's property. Secondly, by the drawings, it appears that the calculations show that some of the gravel on my client's side will encroach on their property slightly, so there's a concern that there'll be an additional encroachment with the gravel that will be put on the property, supporting the two, the borders of the two properties. They're concerned with the structural damage that the actual construction will have based on the proximity of the two properties. They're concerned specifically that the basement, their basement wall or their foundation will be impacted. In general, they're concerned with the lighting that will impact their property as the construction is done to the rear of the property. It will impact the lighting as it affects the sun and general lighting to their property. They're concerned with their privacy issues, based on the windows that will be facing their side. They're concerned with their privacy. There's also eight small trees that neighbor the two properties, and approximately six of them appear to be on my client's property line, and two may be on the other property. There's a concern that those eight trees, including six that appear to be on their property, will be destroyed as part of this process. And then lastly, the application does not have any notation of an AC compressor, which we believe will be subsequent to this application. There's no notation where that would be placed on the property, and there's a concern that it will be an encroaching situation. I have three alternative options for the board. One would be to delay a vote on this matter today and continue this matter to the March or April hearing, to enable my client the opportunity to have a structural engineer and/or a water soil expert evaluate this application, to give my client either comfort or not comfort, as the case may be, as to how the water will be impacted by this construction. Alternatively, it would be my request that this board denies the application, as the criteria for the C1 and C2 variance has not been met. Specifically, the purposes of the municipal land use law will not be advanced by a deviation of the zoning ordinance requirements, and the benefits of the deviation will not substantially outweigh any detriment. Specifically, there's detriment to my client, and there's negative impact. The third alternative, if the board was to grant this application, is to do so with conditions. One of those conditions would be that the gravel pit that would be installed or put into the bordering areas contain bentonite. Bentonite is a waterproofing clay that absorbs the water. Basically, how the gravel is done, it's layered, and it includes this bentonite, which will prevent or assist or improve the water absorption, so as to mitigate that possible risk to my client for water problems to the wall or the foundation. Other conditions that we would request is that the zoning officer or the board, in granting any approval, make sure that the AC compressor is noted and does not encroach, that the trees are not destroyed, and that the gravel area does not encroach upon my client's property. That is it, and I thank the board for their consideration.
Thank you.
Can I respond?
You can.
Jen and I had a lengthy conversation with John and Rebecca, who are in South Africa. We went through all these points. We explained what we were going to do, and they told us they were very pleased with this and appreciated the transparency that we, that we had every step of the way. You know, we made the effort to reach out and go over the plans with Rebecca before she left for South Africa, and then we sent them plans to John there, and we went through them. But, so let me go through the seven points. First is the issue of the water flooding. The area, the entire area is prone, as you probably well know, to flooding issues, particularly flash flooding issues, and this is exacerbated by the water that comes off the Park Street parking lot. And the problem has gotten worse in recent years, unfortunately. Our plan, as we explained to John and Rebecca, is to put, you know, we share their concern, too. You know, they have never had water in their basement, as they told us. We have had water. You know, we, this house has had several feet of water. Leslie Wischnik, who owns the house next to us, has had four feet of water in her basement. So we really understand this concern, and so as part of this, we are putting in a robust French drains-type system that will take, collect all the water and take it away from, from particularly that part of the property, that side of the property. So this is actually a benefit to them. I understand their concern. We share it as well. As for the additional encroachment on the property, I don't, really don't understand that, considering that we're moving the building away from them. Structural damage, I understand the concern there. We are using Leslie Brahaney, which is a very qualified builder. We actually met with Leslie Brahaney and the excavator and the foundation company on Monday, and went over all of Rebecca and John's concerns. They were absolutely confident that this will not be a problem. You know, they felt that, you know, they do a lot of work in town, they do a lot of close-in construction, they, all the work will be done from the south side, there's no need to get in between the two homes, so, you know, so there's no concern. As for the lighting and sun, again, on the sun, I don't really get, when we're moving the building away from them, why their concern would, I don't know if their concern is having too much sun, or is the problem having, losing sunlight, because by moving the building away from them, I would think that that actually is a benefit. Lighting, I don't really, I mean, we're happy to do whatever. I know you guys always finish these meetings or these sessions with a concern about lighting, and so we will, you know, do everything possible so that no light goes on them.
We did, remember for the carriage?
We did, that was for the carriage house. Privacy facing their site, well, again, we're moving the house away from them, so I don't, and we're getting rid of windows on the first floor, so...
No windows, we'll look into their house.
As for the eight small trees, some are on theirs and some are on our side. I talked to the excavator. He agreed that if anything gets ruined, we will replace them. And as for the compressor, which is item number seven, I told Rebecca and John that we're going to place them on the driveway, away, which is on the opposite side of their house, so that won't be an issue of theirs. I, you know, we're, we are, like I said, going out of our way to address the flooding issues. We are putting in a very expensive system. This is a very expensive project. I don't feel that the bentonite, you know, water clay will be necessary. You know, I've gotten full assurance from our construction, engineering, and architectural team that this is not a concern of theirs at all.
Okay. Thank you.
And I'm sorry, if I may, just add one more point. The reason we would really feel that getting approval as soon as possible is important is because we'd want to be able to get the work started and a foundation in before the height of the summer. June and July are when we have the thunderstorms and the flash floods, and it's the flash floods that are a problem here. It's not only the water coming in off the parking lot and down the street, but it's also, it's also the fact that Harry's Brook runs through this property. It is capped, runs through, and when we have flash floods, the water backs up and water actually comes out of the drain. It actually popped off the grate on the drain in the middle of our property.
That could be your settling issue right there, Harry's Brook running through there.
So that is the issue, and we are, what we're trying to do is be able to get approval so we can actually do this work, and that'll improve things, but also be able to get the work done before the height of the flash flood storm season.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else like to comment?
Nope.
Okay.
Hello. Leslie Wischnik, adjacent property owner at Pied Madison.
Ma'am, if we could just swear you in, if you would raise your right hand, you swear affirm any testimony you give this evening will be truthful.
I do.
Thank you.
I'm appearing on behalf of Jen and Steve's application, in support of it, without objection. What I do appreciate is that they are preserving the character of the neighborhood by putting on a much more livable addition in the back, but having, preserving the wonderful frontage of the house, the front elevation. The front elevation is really, really attractive and in keeping with the other houses on the street. Steve is right. The flooding has to do with the drainage underneath our properties, that drainage pipe just does not have the capacity for the water that runs through it from Spring Street. So I hope that you approve their application today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Please.
Good evening. Richard Ryan, 36 Park Place and also Eight Branch Alley.
Mr. Ryan, do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I just want to also speak on behalf of this application and make two points. One is that I've lived at that location now for 38 years and there's been an enormous amount of work on Madison Street, also on Park Place. And in all that time, there hasn't been a single total tear down. It's a remarkable part of Princeton, I think, that has escaped the tear down thing. And I was delighted to hear that while the tear down image flickered through the minds of Steve and Jennifer, they rejected that and are going ahead as they do. Also, Steve said that nobody could see the house from the backside. Actually, I can, from Eight Branch Alley, we're the closest neighbors. And I like what I'm seeing and I think it'll be a, an improvement. And finally, as to the difficulty of working in these close quarters, my garage apartment at Eight Branch Alley is within 18 inches, possibly less, at points of that stone wall that Steve and Jennifer have in their backyard where the fountain is. And amazingly, the contractor and the workers were able to get in there and do the job. They didn't hurt the stone wall, it didn't, we were able to get our work done. So I think these people in this neighborhood in particular are tuned in to the challenges, the construction challenges. So I would think that they've got more accessibility on this than I did, certainly. So I recommend the endorsement, the approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Oh, come on.
Okay, well, if anybody, okay, please, come on.
Lori Namies, 16 Madison. I was just in front of you earlier. I full-heartedly.
Ms. Namies, we'll just say you're still under oath.
I'm still under oath. I full-heartedly support this application because as the other two people who came forward that live on the street or near the street have also stated that they're preserving the way the house looks and, you know, I've worked really hard to maintain as much of that as I could. And I think that we are a unique in and of ourselves, our neighborhood, and I like what they're doing and I like that they're becoming more conforming. And that was something that I was sensitive to even on my application. I think that this is something that we should support. I also know that there is a water issue on our street and there was a spring that runs underneath. Luckily for me, it's just to the south of my property, but even the neighbors that are just south of my property have had numerous issues with it. Before I moved into the house, one of the conditions that I had with the previous owners was to install a French drain, which really, I've never had any water in my house. I have a very substantial some pump that goes into the storm drain system and it works very well and I think they're being sensitive to that. And I hear that they're willing to address those concerns that were raised and I understand the concerns, but I think they're being good land stewards and good neighbors on the street to, to make something that could be worse for all of us. If it starts to fall down in the back, then they're going, we're all going to have a bigger problem on the street. And I applaud that they're taking the opportunity to get to it before it becomes a bigger problem for us. So I support the application.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. I'd like to close the public portion of the meeting and then get the comments from our board. Excuse me, do you have anything you want to add?
No.
Okay. All right. So we'll close the public portion and have the board discuss this. So, comments? Well, I might, I'll make the initial comment. I think your, Mr. Gilbert, your explanation of the concerns of the neighbor, I think, addressed those points, in my opinion, adequately. Their concern seems to be your concern. And so I think that those concerns have, in my opinion, been addressed, at least, let's put it this way, to the extent you can before the construction starts. Obviously, once you start construction, you know, you'll see, once you pull the foundation out, what you're going to need to do. And I think between you, your builder, and the architect, who is also the builder, I think you'll be able to address that. So I think you've, I think you've at least, you know, addressed the concerns of your neighbor. Okay. That's all I have to add. Anyone else like to add something? Okay.
I'm seeing impervious coverage is actually slightly lower. Is that, yeah?
Yeah. Am I allowed to say one thing? Sure. Okay.
I guess you're not allowed to say anything.
He's fine.
Can I ask you one question?
Sure.
What the discussion of the fence came up that Ms. Kim talked about, can you tell me where that's going to be and what it's going to be?
Oh, right. Well, this, you never actually had that in mind until we met with the Historic Preservation Committee. Mr. Von Bush, Zumbush, Mr. Von Zumbush was concerned about the gang windows on the side, which, you know, aren't all that visible. But, you know, it was, my wife actually suggested, well, that at some point, at some point, we may want to put some kind of pergola up or some fence with an entrance with a gate and some plantings.
If there's money.
What's that?
If there's any money left.
Well, I didn't hear yet, sorry.
If there's any money left.
If there's any money left.
We're not going to promise.
Right, right.
We're hoping we could.
But we recognize too that that would probably require a variance, in which case we would come back for that, I suppose. It was, you know, that may be something we'd like to do. We'd like to, it's a long driveway. I mean, it's a unique property because we can put a lot, we can do, stack a lot of cars in that driveway as well as the two garage bays in the back. So we may take a portion of that very back end of the driveway where the objectionable windows were located and put some planting there and make that a bit of a garden so that we're not looking out on gravel or a car. So, you know, that, that's really where the idea of the fence or the pergola came up.
What does that do to your recommendation, to the HPC Board's recommendation? Because it seems that the idea of the fence is iffy. I mean, they're not sure they're going to do it yet. Does that affect your Board's recommendation?
I, my understanding was that it was something that the applicant had agreed to, had offered and agreed to address at least the first floor windows. I mean, we knew that there was, you know, there was a discussion about perhaps changing some of the profile to the second floor, but the rest of the commission members were happy to leave the windows out as was proposed since they weren't going to address the ones on the first floor. So there was something being addressed. So I don't think that they understood, as far as I can tell, that it was something that might be considered. I believe that they felt it was going to be offered, that during that discussion that the applicant had said, yes, we will do this.
Well, we'll.
I think we said that we would suggest that to the guy that was objecting to the windows. No one else did, from my impression. People liked the windows, which we like. And then we said, you know, there was a thought. If we had money in the end, we could maybe build, you know, a little arbor that you could walk through and then you could look at a garden when you looked out the windows and that would be not a parking space. But we didn't know we were obliged to do that as a mandatory thing in order to pass, you know, because we don't know if we have, that's not in the budget yet.
Right. I don't think that it was, I mean, the way that the memo is written, it obviously is left up to the Board to decide, but their understanding was that that was something that you were offering.
We thought, we thought it was an option, we might do it in the future, but we don't know if the budget's going to matter, if it's going to look, we wanted to see how it looked before. And then if we have to get a variance to do that, we didn't want to hold up the project.
Right. And I think that within the memo, it also said that they did support the variance, that there was one required, because again, this was just a discussion that was made at the meeting.
Yeah, that was what we thought, yeah.
The only question is if, please.
I mean, if you're in Arbor, if it's less than six feet tall, it wouldn't require a variance. Also, if it's set, well, there's not sufficient space to set it in, but a fence or an arbor six feet does not require a variance, same as a pergola. If it's set back five feet from the property, that wouldn't require a variance either, so.
I just think, I guess what Steve's feeling I can feel is that, like, we just want to see how it looks before we commit to building something that we haven't designed and we don't know. We know that that's an option we would like, so you could look out the window and see pretty green flowers and stuff, you know, but we want to make sure that it works with the design and that we haven't had it thought out. It was just a thought at the beginning. First, we may, you know, not want to sacrifice our parking. We may need that parking with the kids visiting now and then, you know, but then we might like it too. If we're required to do it, we didn't understand that we would be required to do it. We just thought it was a suggestion to comply with the guy who didn't like the windows, where everybody else did like the windows. So that's what, my understanding was that it wasn't the necessary thing, it was the suggestion that I made, you know.
The recommendations of the Historic Preservation Committee are, they're advisory and we can accept or not accept them. But I want to, I'd like to know if this is an arbitrary decision on their part, would that have affected the Board's recommendation of approval?
Good question. It's hard to tell. I believe the majority of the members would probably have still agreed with it. The gentleman who did object, he did not support the application, but it's, but the unanimous vote was that they did support it. So I believe that they still would have.
But you don't know. Okay.
Yeah. That was my impression.
Okay. All right. Okay. Thank you. Okay. Does any, the Board have any comments on this application? So, what would you like to do? You making a motion for approval? Okay.
Second.
Second. Okay. We have a motion of second.
Question.
What are we approving? On what basis are we approving?
Correct.
Right.
And what conditions? You did hear concerns raised by the neighbors' counsel, Mr. Rottenberg, and you heard a response from the applicant. So I think the motion should take into account, are any of those concerns going to be attached now or the response to those concerns attached as conditions?
It seems to me that they've met all the concerns, at least as I heard the response. He was, he was addressing each of the concerns that was raised. I don't see any reason why we need to add a condition.
Well, they should be referenced in a approval.
Well, yeah.
If they're going to agree to replant trees and then that should be in the approval. If they, otherwise, it's tough to enforce it.
Well, it'd be impossible to enforce it because all that would be, would be testimony from the applicant, but it's not a condition. So then if the neighbors complained to Mr. Bridger, Mr. Bridger would say, well, it wasn't a condition of approval. I know, I know the applicant said they would, but I can't make them do that. I do have a question for Mr. Bridger. This is an application that require review by the municipal engineer with respect to various.
I would say that the impervious coverage is reduced, but due to the amount of construction on site, I think the engineer's going to want to look at the site and make sure that the proper fences are put up and the stabilization around the site is put up and any tree protection is put up, so. And then possibly he may suggest that the drain, if there's a way to direct the drainage pipes away from the neighbor at Nine Madison, that that water's directed away from them. So I would suggest that there's a review by the engineering, just as there would be on any new house.
As there would be, right, exactly.
And, you know, that there's requirements for safety and stabilization that should be reviewed by the engineer.
The Board normally attaches conditions saying you can't increase the runoff or drainage impact on the neighbor. But, so I mean, that's usually standard conditions that the Board puts anyway on their approvals when somebody is replacing a house or building a new house, or in this case, half of their So that's something that normally is a standard condition along with the lighting impact as well. I'm just looking at any.
I mean, it's part of the normal.
It's part of the normal conditions. And I guess a concern was raised about the AC compressor, but the applicant's response is that's going to be, I guess they'll identify where that will be and it won't be near their.
In the construction plans, it's going to show, it's over on the opposite side. And the drainage is all in the construction plans, it's going to show the extensive draining that's going to actually increase and protect not only our house, but they who are higher up than we are, frankly. And so we're going out of our way to, in our building drawings, you're going to see all the drainage that's being done. So we have to do more than that or?
No, what I'm saying is the building department doesn't review drainage, the engineer does. So that's why it should come to the engineer and he can, you know, same with the site stabilization and all the other stuff. You'll have to put an outhouse out there, there's, you know, I mean, a porta-pot and there's all kinds of stuff that you have to comply with, so.
But as part of the typical approval, engineering review and building permit process, the engineer will review that.
Yeah.
But it's also a condition the Board routinely puts on applications, so.
Okay. Is your roof drainage, is it going underground or?
Well, they, they were, yes, yes, they went into the ground and then when we did some work on that rear garage, we brought the electric and water service out to it, we found that the pipes just actually ended into the ground. They did not drain into anything. Dan Mayer Brown from the engineer's office came out, wonderful, I have to say, the engineering office in this township is the most wonderful office I've ever worked with. We called Dan in the morning. He said, well, is it okay if I come out in about an hour? He came out, we explained we had a drainage problem, we looked at Harry's Brook, and he said, well, I'm really fine with you guys tapping into it, you know, I'll be back in the afternoon to see what you did. I mean, it's remarkable how cooperative this town can be in the engineering department.
And they're, Rebecca and John are hooked up to a drainage.
Directly into the drain system out on Willow and Branch Ave, so.
Which would be great if we could do.
That's, that's what I was getting at. What are you planning on doing?
We want to, absolutely. In fact, I'm going to, I'm going to call Dan Mayer Brown.
It's a problem.
In fact, Rebecca, when I talked to her the other day, you know, she said you guys should be tapping, you're, all the lines were cut when Branch Alley drainage was completely replaced at one point. And so they were able to tap back into the drainage system. Our system was not. And our, the previous owner was John Borden and there were health issues for a number of years and John never got around to it. He was, we knew him quite well, so we knew, we really know a lot about this house.
But yes, we are planning on.
Yeah, we're going to do whatever.
We'd like to get the water into a big drain.
Exactly.
We'd rather not have it in our yard.
So are we approving this with the condition of engineering approval or oversight?
Review by the engineering and the tree replacement they agreed to, because that if we don't deal with it here now, we'll be dealing with it in another matter, in another venue, probably.
There was lighting impact or was that, what you brought up, is that, how do we address? Is that, how do we address?
Well, I don't understand the lighting. What is the lighting problem?
There's one, there's one wall light in the back.
So that's not, it's not even the lighting, it's just the window. There is no.
My understanding is that the rear area will be extended, and because of that extension, it will impact it. It's not exactly where it is currently.
Window lighting or fixtures?
The building itself is not going to end, I thought, at the same place. It's going to be higher.
It extends back further. It's not higher, I don't think.
Yeah, no. So I mean.
It's about another. It's the same footprint total.
Yeah, there's no extra lighting.
No, what I'm saying, the footprint, to my knowledge, is not the same, and I believe that will impact the sun and the lighting that impacts the房子.
We are adding eight square feet to the foundation.
Okay. So, so my understanding is that it's going to extend several feet, and that will impact the lighting to my client's house.
It's eight to 12 inches is what it's extending. And we're pulling in, and where we're coming out, we're pulling it in. So it's actually the same amount of square footage.
And we're also getting rid of a window that right now faces right into their kitchen. And we're also replacing the gutters that right now spill over to the side of our house, which also impacts the drain. So that whole gutter system's going to improve the water too.
So Steve, can you give your motion to approve with the engineering's interpretation? So now's make that motion?
I can't do it because I second it, but I.
Okay.
Mr. Davids.
I asked if.
Yes.
Well, we got into a discussion of what the conditions might be.
Is there now a friendly amendment to allow for those additions to the, okay? So does that mean that we have a motion on the floor and then we need to call the question?
Yes.
And the, the basis of the motion is as a C1 variance? I don't know whose motion it is, so.
We were talking about the conditions we were going to place on the motion.
I know, but C1?
Yes.
Okay. Claudia?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Davids?
Yes.
Mr. Floyd?
Yes.
Mr. Schreiber?
Yes.
Mr. Tenenbaum?
Yes.
Ms. Chen?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Are we done?
We're done.
I think you're done.
Thank you. We have to go home.
I believe that's the end of our meeting. Thank you.
We're done. Yeah, yeah. Right. Yes, they can if they want to.